Hallelujah! Sutram adhavay sutram kattavay adhavay sappam ummaalaiyil kaakum kandrisathikram kattapane ummaalaiyil kaakum kandrisathikram kattapane adhavay 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 Kasthal naam neethu kumalame churupanipadum Yedho vaan neede arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho vaan neede arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan neede yedhami pathuthu vee Yedho vaan neede yedhami pathuthu vee Kalakalappa nagak kalakappa kalakalappa nagak kalakappa Ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan esiyee yedhami pathuthu vee Yedho vaan esiyee yedhami pathuthu vee Soothidavee appa soothidavee Soothidavee appa soothidavee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan raappa sugan tharum devavee Yedho vaan raappa sugan tharum devavee Kalakalappa nagak kalakappa kalakalappa nagak kalakappa Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan ruha yedbenakalvay parree Yedho vaan ruha yedbenakalvay parree Soothidavee appa soothidavee Soothidavee appa soothidavee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan shamma udavay irakkidi Yedho vaan shamma udavay irakkidi Kalakalappa nagak kalakappa kalakalappa nagak kalakappa Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Yedho vaan sharu samadan tharum idhi Yedho vaan sharu samadan tharum idhi Soothidavee appa soothidavee Soothidavee appa soothidavee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Kattanam Yedho ugalidavee arthodhu thooditthiduvee Hallelujah! Avrana ramaadakariyam unchukundu Hallelujah! Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah yedhami ummaalam Aavum yedhamavum Ummaavum yedhamavum Aavum yedhamavum Ummaavum yedhamavum Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah yedhami ummaalam Soothi muriyadakka thudakseepavaniyade ayya neede Yedhi muriyadakka seepavaniyade ayya neede Soothi muriyadakka thudakseepavaniyade ayya neede Yedhi muriyadakka seepavaniyade ayya neede Umma omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Appa omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah yedhami ummaalam Yedhu thudikka irinetchi odipavaniyade ayya neede Yedkaavayyam ayya neede Yedhu thudikka irinetchi odipavaniyade ayya neede Yedkaavayyam seepavaniyade avaniyade ayya neede Appa omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Appa omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah yedhami ummaalam Balakalvayyam thakalvayyam utcha panchavavaniyade ayya neede Avakalvayyam thanidhiyai panchavavaniyade ayya neede Balakalvayyam thanidhiyam panchavavaniyade ayya neede Avakalvayyam thanidhiyai panchavavaniyade ayya neede Appa omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Appa omakku sookam anpey omakku sookam Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Umma ramaadakariyam unchukundu Yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah yedhami ummaalam Hallelujah! Namdevarusim denee arad Sutram adhavay sutram kattavay adhavay ummeethu dikram kattavay adhavay udiyukkum adhavay kaaling leesigay adhavay kallayum mehala acha adhavay sappam meen varavetkum kattavay adhavay sappam meethu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam meen pochukkum kattavay adhavay sappam urubrum seerapudada udine vasru seeravay appa adhavay sappam meethu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam meen pochukkum kattapane adhavay udineyam peekhey appa adhavay sappam meethu dikram thudikram thudikram kattavay adhavay sappam sutram kattavay adhavay sappam meen urubhu thunkeevidam kattavay adhavay ummeethu vilaksham adhavay kallayum mehala adhavay meethu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam sutram kattavay adhavay sappam sutram sutram kattavay adhavay kiranana aradukkum kattapane adhavay sappam iduvarum kattavay adhavay sappam meen kattavay adhavay sappam manipolakthaadi kattavay appa adhavay meethu dikram thudikram kattavay adhavay sappam meethu dikram kattavay adhavay meen pochukkum kattavay acha adhavay omakku appa urubrum meethu kattapane acha adhavay neede peekhey kattavay adhavay omakku appa namdevarum urubrum meethu thudikram kattavay adhavay neede parisukkara peekhey kattavay meethu dikram kattavay appa adhavay sappam meen olupparisukkam aradukkum thudikram kattapane adhavay neede urubrum peekhey kattavay meethu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam meen pochukkum Manipalum seeda oridum saidilum engal thae yedhanay manidam yaarum kandila navimay udayada engal thae neere unnal neere parisutam neere maguttuvam umayaa raavippe neere unnal neere parisutam neere maguttuvam umayaa raavippe Appa adhavay sutram neede thudikram kattavay meethu dikram kattavay adhavay meen urubhu dikram urubhu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam meen varavetkum kattavay siddhasinathile vichyukkum kattapane appa adhavay meen varavetkum kattavay adhavay sappam meen varavetkum kattavay acha adhavay sappam meen pochukkum pochukkum kattavay adhavay sappam meethu dikram kattavay adhavay kallayum kattavay thudikram parisutam parisutam kattavay koyamun suni punanu kaavum kenna kisalikram kattapane adhavay sappam sutram kattavay adhavay sappam meen varavetkum kattavay meen parivirukkum kattavay adhavay neede kattavay thanidhiyam neede adhavay sappam meen aapki avlu thiravay adhavay sappam meen aapki neede thanidhiyam acha adhavay meethu dikram thudikram thudikram kattavay adhavay sappam sutram kattavay thaay varagaram meen varavat leepu neera paas adhavay sappam sutram kattavay meethu dikram thudikram kattavay adhavay meethu dikram appa adhavay meethu dikram kattapane adhavay meethu dikram kattapane aapki acha appa adhavay meethu dikram adhavay sappam meethu dikram neede aapki acha aapki thanidhiyam neede adhavay sappam meethu dikram kattavay adhavay meethu dikram kattavay appa adhavay sappam meethu dikram urubhu dikram kattavay adhavay sappam adhavay meethu dikram thanidhiyam nee appa adhavay namdevarusim visudhukum visudhukum dana vay vay adhavay meethu dikram visudhukum vay vay visudhukum vay 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 meethu dikram vay 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 devani aswada urubrum meethu kattavay vay devan vay devi vay vay thovan kara naam illa sudhak devas adhavay thonavay surthiri thapuram paduthu devas thov deva vay kattavum vitturukkum devas adhavay esu sutram kattavay urude aavum mayim kattavay mayaadavika kattavay samirukkum kattavay deva aavum mayim kattavay adhavay udikram chikadukkam thuv sutram sutram adhavay aadukkum kinnu aadukkum kottukkum peshukkum devam urudukkum peshum annad deva aadukkum 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 urudukkum aadukkum urudukkum aadukkum sudhukkum aadukkum bitya aadukkum 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 urubrum aadukkum 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 devam aadukkum peshum devam esu krishnay aradukkum devikram devam kinnu jirukkum vay vay hallelujah! adhavay sutram aavum kattavay aadukkum 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 esu naam aadukkum varukkum devam aasvadipav devan aadukkum 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 aasvadipav aadukkum 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 vay
Hallelujah! kattavay naam thithumai meem dhakkarlo damali vaidem devan deva aadavalam mudavi
Living of the Lord with Lord's Word today's evening let's discuss about the Lord's Word
Luke 115
Luke
115
19 chapter 19
115 115 115 115
Luke chapter 19 verses 1 to 9 that the Lord let us discuss about this
Nudhalavada vasonam nudhalavada
The first verse says like this
Avr eni kovil pravesithu adhi vadiyaka naddakum ogeyin
Jesus entered and passed through Jericho
Ayukkaradukkum talikannu aisariyavanma idhida sakili ednapattam
A chief tax collector and a rich man named Zacchaeus
Esu eppadi kattavaro yendra
He was sought to see who was Jesus was
Avr kulanaanapadiya jana kuttati avre kaanakku udahal
Since he had a short stature he couldn't see Jesus
Avr thookum vadi nuunaga
He ran before Lord
Avre paarukum vadi
To see him
Pur kaattati marathi eginaan
He gave a glance on the sycamore tree
Esu andha idath
When Jesus came to the tree
Mananath
He looked up
Avne kandu
And saw him
Sagiyave
Zacchaeus
Esu sikarama yenigva
Make haste and calm down
Inrekkinaan
Today
Un vittire thankavaidum
I have to come to you stay at your home
Avr sikarama yenigvi
So he made haste
Santoshath
With happiness
Avre aadukkum kundukkonaan
He brought him to his house
Adhe kand yavram
When people saw that
Ivare paaviyan manushnadathil
He's this man This man is going to be a guest to sinners
Tangupadik odaare murumurukkargal
They quarrelled that this man is going to stay with the sinner Hallelujah! At this At this moment
Hallelujah! Namudhal adhika mudhal vasonathil 115 vasonam vasonam vasonam
From verses 1 to 9 if you see it says that this
115 vasonam
The ninth verse says that this
Esu apne noke
Jesus looked at him
Inrekk
Today
Indha vittukke
To this house
Rachip vandathu
Salvation has come
Hallelujah!
Hallelujah!
Ee dharathle amparukum sagiyu edhavam manushni kuthu dharathle veda fakudi eppadi aadukkum esu
This scripture says that we are saying about a man called Zacchaeus and Jesus talks about him
Esu eppadi kattavaro
Oh, he was thinking how Jesus is who was Jesus?
Avre paarukum vadi kavinaan
He was planning and willing to see him
Avr eppadi kattavaro manushna edhavam
When you see who was Zacchaeus
Avr pur ayukanna
He was a tax collector
Avr pur aisariyavanma
He was also rich
Aanadum
But
Avr idathre
In him
Avr idathre varukuray
He has a deficiency in him
Yedeh char
What because
Avr
He
Avr charangal idathre aniyay mai varipasmitthavam manushna yidukkare naan paarukkum
He took money from people by false accusation
Andasunil
In that situation
Aadukkum esu
The Lord Jesus Christ
Avre varukkare
He came
Aadukkum
He came to that place
Avr paarukum Avr avre paarukum vadiyaga avr enakadanga avr kaattati marakam kulana andha kaattati marakimere avr eeringin naan
Oh, since he was he was a short stature he couldn't see Jesus so he climbed upon a sycamore tree
Avr meele eeri andha marakimere eeri tanney
Oh, he climbed upon the tree and he visited
Yedeh char
Why he passed?
Tanney aadukkum paarukkum vadi
Oh, he doesn't want Jesus to see him but he wants to see Jesus
Adhanare
Because that
Adhanare avr anthe maritu kudukkam marakthay avr kaattati marakthay
So he goes to the tree and finds himself
Vedam sullukkum Tanpaavam vadi paarukkum vadi aadukkum chenigavam devan idathkum peruvan inu naan vittimurukkale 28 adhikaran 13
Proverbs 28 13 says He who covers his sins will not prosper but whoever confesses then foresters him will have mercy
Yedeh char
Why because
Purvatham tharudhi paavam vadi
No one can hide his sins
Yedeh char Paavam vadi ellavach marithukkam avr paavam vadi mannikkira deva
He cannot hide his sins because the Lord who knows everything he also knows about his sins
Avr tanney maritu kudukkum avr tharadukaattati marakthale avr eeringin
This man goes and hits himself while climbing up a sycamore tree
Andha idath esu vandhapurudhu avre anadukkum avre kand sagiyave sikarama yenigva yudukkira upidhi
Oh, Jesus comes there and looks sudden and he says make haste Zacchaeus calm down I have to stay in your home today
Avr sikarama yenigva inu
He came with haste
Avr santoshan mai esu vadi
He also was very happy
Avr kand yavram kumil andha urubpa idathre yedeh char paavigal odi avr tangupadi yidukkum
When people saw this they started to quarrel because they said nice
Naan tim tim vadi vadi adhikaran padanitha vasonam
1 Timothy 115 says
Paavigal rachikke Kristu esu gulakathil vandha yidukkam aavthay unkalum ellavakay avr kain pradhanam paavinaan
This is a faithful saying worthy of all acceptance that Jesus Christ Jesus came into the world to save sinners of who I am chief
Ningi parisutha paav
Here the apostle Paul writes
Neemothi keldum eppadi
When he writes to Timothy he says that
Paavigal rachikke esu rachip
Oh, Christ Jesus came to the world to save sinners
Idhe indha idathre kudukkam sagiyave nikkum vadiyaga aadukkum esu rachip
Oh, you see here in the scripture of Luke Jesus comes to save and to give salvation to Zacchaeus
Avr paavat vadi maritu
But Jesus doesn't want him to die in sin
Adhanay andha paavat vadi aadukkum esu rachip avr ain tanney pittukkum sagiy aadukkum
Oh, Jesus doesn't want him to die in sin but to rescue and to give salvation Jesus came and met him
Esu or vittikum varuparana
When Jesus comes into a house
Avr vittikum madhala rachip
Firstly, there's salvation
Madhala apadi paarukkum kudukkam
The life is getting transformed
Pur paaviyan varukkam esu
Oh, Zacchaeus was a sinful man
Adhi aadukkum vadi
When Jesus entered his house
Avr tharudhi paavam vadi aadukkum
Oh, he confessed his sins to the Lord Jesus
Aadukkum vadi
What did he He said to Jesus
Sagiyu nikchu kattari noke aadukkum vadi aavthay paav yedeh kudukkum vadi aniyay mai paav tharudhi kudukkum
Zacchaeus' students looked at Jesus and said Lord, I gave half of my goods to the poor and if I have taken anything wrong for my position I rest him with 4:47
Sagiyu kudukkam rachikram aavthay avr tharudhi aavthay aadukkum vadi aadukkum vadi ellavak avar kudukkum vadi
Before people could say false accounts about him he himself comes before the Lord and comments his sins and he surrenders himself
Tanpaav esu kumuttilam mai paarukkum
Oh, he surrendered his sweet life to the Lord Jesus
Yedehtha varukkum vadi kudukkum vadi aadukkum vadi avr manchukkum mai ellavak thirup aadukkum vadi
He is telling that he is confessing that to whomever he received by false accusation he will receive that return that back with 4:47
Aadukkum avr idathle marukkum
When Jesus comes to a person
Avr madhala
Firstly
Namudhi paavam vadi
He is like explaining us about our inner sin which we have
Uddathukkum maathiravam
Not only to distract and help us
Avr mannikkira deva
He also forgives us
Indha idathre aadukkum esu rachip avr idathre rachip vadi
In this play exactly the Lord gives the steps to Zacchaeus to earn the people again this house is receiving salvation today
Aadukkum esu rachip namudhithe varukkum madhala avr paavam vadi
When Jesus comes to us today he is firstly forgiving our sins
Avr neesikkira deva
He is the Lord of love
Adhanare avr nahakkam avr chiivanay
That's why he gave this life for us
Naan marikke idathre avr marikta ndabula kasavathukkum vadi miet kudukkum vadi aadukkum esu siluvay nahakkam marikthi munsam
To save us from sin in a place where we have to die the Lord came and gave his life in the cross and saved us from all the things
Aadukkum
God is able to forgive the sins and to give them a new life after
Mathi 115 adhikaran 26 vasonam
16 verse 21
Anisvar 8 30 aadukkum
Mark 8 36
Manush buladum urubhati maadhay kudukkum tanji manikshak kudukkum
It says that the man if he occupies the whole world but he is not proper in his body it is not of no use
Avr aadukkum vadi pillay vadi avr namudhi paavam vadi avr namay avr sontham pillay
When he objects to the Lord he forgives us and then he accepts us as his own children
Ningi sagiyukkum aadukkum vadi ivan aavthay
Here he says to they say stating that he is also a son of Abraham
Aadukkum deva namodukkum vadi avr namay rachip vadi namodukkum avr urukkum vadi namudhi paavam
The Lord is the one who is with us and he is the one who is able to forgive our sins
Avr namudhi paavam vadi
The Lord is the one who is not thinking about our sins
Avr namudhi akramukkum vadi
He is forgiving all our mistakes
Esu sagiyu miludi paavati avr maniktha namudhi akramukkum vadi indha idathre aadukkum rachip vadi
Here when he came to Zacchaeus firstly he forgives his sins and then he gave a salvation to Zacchaeus
Namani vadi esu eppadi kattavaro yendra aneg kane kudukkum avr namay sagira deva
In this evening many will have so many types of questions who is Jesus?
Avr vadi vaidam vadi
His grace is upon those who fear him
Avr noke kupudukkum yavram avr mudavi sagira
He helps those who are falling upon his name
Esu sagiyu eppadi kattavaro yendri
Here Zacchaeus comes here in search of knowing how Jesus is
Sagiyu avr nalav vadi
He was good to Zacchaeus
Sagiyu paarukkale namay
He did good to his life
Namudhi paarukkailo indha mahani vadi avr namay
He is also a God who does do good in our life
Namudhi